At 3:24 PM, we'd like to call the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for January 21st, 2014 to order. May we have a roll call?
Council members.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Nadian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. May I report?
The agenda for the January 21st, 2014 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, January 16th, 2014 on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Before you's public hearing, Director of Community Development continued from December 10th, 2013 and December 17th, 2013 regarding a public storage project located at 5500 San Fernando Road, combined Stage 1/2 design review, parking reduction, standards variance, and mitigation negative declaration.
Thank you.
And there is a number, A is a resolution adopting mitigated negative declaration, B is a motion approving combined Stage 1/2 design, C is a motion approving parking reduction permit, D is a motion approving standards variance.
Now, Mr. Choa.
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of a public hearing that concerns the proposed project at the location that was read into the record. As you recall, last time, there was some discussion about impact on an adjoining property owner with respect to the size of the building and the shading over the affected property to the east of the proposed project site. So, the proponent, Public Storage, conducted a shade study, and I will ask Billias Zemtaitis or Senior Planner to come forward and provide any detail that the council may want to see on said project.
Good afternoon, council. As you are aware of, the public storage facility is a new project proposed at 5500 San Fernando Road. It is a four-story, approximately 174,000 square foot mini-storage facility. As Mr. Choa stated, shade and study, shade and shadow study was requested by council at the December 10th meeting. Part of your packet obviously included the shade and shadow study, which ultimately revealed through computer simulated graphics that the adjoining neighboring property would be shaded in the late afternoon on the summer solstice days, which would essentially be from 3:00 PM until sunset, and on the winter solstice days, it would be shaded approximately from 1:00 PM until sunset. The city CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, thresholds specifically state that the impact is significant if a project would shade currently unshaded uses located off the site that are sensitive to shadows such as residences, school playgrounds, parks, and similar uses for more than two continuous hours between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM during the winter and 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM during the summer. So, based on the shade and shadow study and the CEQA guideline, the industrial use next door is not considered a sensitive use to shading impacts, and that the shadows created by the project on the adjacent use would not be identified as a significant impact for this reason. Also included in your packet for today's council was an additional letter submitted by the applicant, in which they summarize the operations of four similar type flameproofing uses, and the use next door is actually a flameproofing fire retardant type use. The summary revealed as well as that the temperature and relative humidity has much to do with it more and more so than actually the shade or shadow or the sunlight in terms of flameproofing fabrics. Also included in that letter was a summary conclusion statement from a physicist that was hired, again, that validated that air temperature and relative humidity are the controlling factors of that drying process. That concludes staff's brief presentation. The applicant is in the audience, as well as the environmental consultant, Mr. Tony LaCaciato, who prepared the shade and shadow study on behalf of Meridian, the environmental consultant.
Thank you. Do we have speaker cards? Any comments before we see the speakers? Would that open the public hearing? Do I have to do that, or is it continued? Opened? Mr. City Attorney?
Sorry?
Do I have to reopen the public hearing? Is it considered open?
It's still, it's still open, but yeah, you can open it, and then you can, you can take any comments, or you can limit it to the scope of the...
I reopen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm reopening the public hearing. There are four cards. You're from the public first, Jim Fitzpatrick. How many minutes would you like?
Probably five to 10. I'll go five.
Okay, let's try five.
I have a show, or a slide presentation. Oh, he'll put it up.
Is that it?
Yeah. First of all, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. My name's Jim Fitzpatrick. I'm the Senior Vice President with Public Storage. First, I want to let you know that we've reached an agreement with our neighbor. After here, we were fairly surprised, you know, that it was opposition, so we did quite a bit of research to try to understand his business, and ultimately, we came up with a solution, and he's on board with it. So, that's a real positive. As far as the location itself, it's a very challenging site. First of all, because it's very irregular in shape, there's a lot of noise due to the freeway and the railroad with additional vibration coming from the railroad, and it's a highly impacted intersection during commuter hours. That being said, we looked at a lot of other potential uses that could, that could go on the property, and if we look at something like a retail center, it's at 843 trips compared to 46 for our use, which is approximately 18 times the impact. Warehousing discount clubs, about 16 times. So, we feel like Public Storage is an excellent use for this property. As far as the architecture goes, we met with, with Jeff Platt and staff, and they relayed to us that they wanted something significant. So, we met with them. We went out and looked at architecture in the Glendale area and tried to incorporate some of that, and we went through several iterations with Jeff and his team, and we came back with something that we're very happy with. This site's very important to us because of proximity to our headquarters in Glendale, which is only about a mile away. So, you know, we realize that this is the gateway to Glendale, and we're happy with the design and the significant impact it'll have as far as architecture. Parking and loading. The city ordinance really doesn't address mini-storage in their code. It's more addressed to a warehousing distribution center. It really doesn't demonstrate the need for parking or loading for mini-storage. So, staff required us to do a parking study and a loading zone study, which we submitted, and, and the findings were that we have more than enough loading and more than enough parking, and staff agreed with that conclusion. In addition to that, we've done a number of studies throughout the years, and we have a number of facilities across the country, and really understand our business. I mean, the most important thing here is customer service. We want to make sure that we provide our customers with enough parking and loading, otherwise, they're going to go somewhere else. So, really, that concludes my presentation, and just open up for any questions you might have.
Any questions? You sure didn't use your five minutes. Okay, we'll go to the next speaker. Jonathan Kurtzinger. Okay.
Two.
Three.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Kurtzinger. I'm the property owner at 835 Milford Street in Glendale, and I'm the owner and president of Fabric Flameproofing Company, which operates at that property. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for previously granting my request for a continuation on approval of the public storage project. We have now had the opportunity, asked for, to review our options and evaluate any impact on Fabric Flameproofing Company Incorporated. Public Storage has been very diligent, as you've heard, in responding to all of our questions and issues. We've worked together with Public Storage for over months now to resolve the outstanding issues successfully, and now fully support the approval of the project going forward. Thank you again for granting us the time needed, and we hope that you'll move ahead in approving a public storage project. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
I was fascinated by Dr. Gates' report. I'm going to keep that, because I found it quite interesting on the drying process. I didn't read it totally in detail, but I think many people like myself have washed rugs and stuff outside and hung them up on a rail or something. And of course, the water drains down, it goes out the bottom, and the last part of the rug to dry is the bottom where the water's draining out. When you apply this fire material, fire resistant material to it, does the whole fabric dry at the same rate because of the ambient temperature, the, all the factors that Dr. Gates mentioned, or is it progressively dry down? When do you determine it's dry? When you touch the bottom and it's dry?
It's very instance-specific, depending on several things, most importantly of which is the thickness of the fiber of the draperies and/or whether or not they're lined, and the temperature. Generally speaking, they would dry from the top down, but that's not always the case.
So, sometime, so you have to feel it at the bottom, whatever, to know when it's totally dry.
The bottom, or, again, it depends on the instance of the draperies, but sometimes they have what you call side hems, and so there's seams that are double thicknesses on the sides that would be thicker and take longer to dry.
Okay, I understand it. Just a question of curiosity.
Sure.
Nice report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Scott Mulmer.
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Mulmer with Lars Anderson Associates. I'm the Site Development Coordinator and Project Civil for this project. I think, one, I know Public Storage is very excited about going to this particular location, not only due to the location, but that they're, actually are located, their corporate headquarters here in Glendale. With that, they develop in conjunction with the city this high look, detailed look elevations, along with lush landscaping around the perimeter. The particular site actually has a zero setback. In other words, you can build all the way up to the property line. In this particular case, they moved it back in order to generate that green belt around the site. Also, through the continuance process, our firm was involved with Dr. Gates on reviewing other facilities, like the business next door, to develop all those findings and be able to work in conjunction with the adjoining property owner. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
See any? Thank you very much. My speaker, Marco Brambilla. Haven't seen you in a while.
Yes, good afternoon. You have missed me. I haven't spoken actually to the council for a long time, and for the record, by the way, my name is Marco Brambilla. I address 109 East Harvard still. I'm actually here to support this project, and typically, when I do this, I support my own projects in front of the city council. In this particular case, I have absolutely no relationship to Public Storage, to the architect, to the owners, individually or professionally. I met in my life one person at 3:00, coming up the elevator, that had relations, you know, to the public storage. So, why am I supporting this project is because I do know the property. Over the last 20, 25 years, I have done several options, concept developments for this project for various potential clients, and none of them ultimately worked, because simply the synergy of the site, the location, the sound, the, the traffic, et cetera, did, did not leave us too many options. So, I think now, finally, there is a project that fits the property. I do think it is the right project for the right location, and that's what I wanted, like, you know, for, for it to be known from someone not related to the project. Having said so, I have read also the staff report, and I have been very impressed, actually, by the attention to detail and the overall analysis that the staff did, probably more than, like, you know, they, they would do, because this was a particularly sensitive project. So, I appreciate that, and I'm not surprised that the staff is actually supporting it, because they have come to their decision after a thorough and meticulous review of the overall project as well, as well as the various details. And I'm, I'm happy that finally, the site that I have been trying to develop for various clients is coming to fruition with an architecture that is actually not typical concrete four walls of a box of the storage, but an architecturally interesting image. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
I have no more cards. I'll close the public hearing. Comments from my colleagues? Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. Last meeting, I was a outspoken critic of this building for several reasons. The first reason was the, what I perceived as the inequity and the unfair burden that the height of the structure was being placed, that was being placed on the fireproofing establishment, Mr. Kurtzinger's business immediately adjacent. I'm very happy that that issue has been resolved between the parties. I'm glad that the extra time that we afforded them resulted in a fruitful negotiation. My other concern primarily was that this is a gateway corner to the city of Glendale. I was concerned that the, the building, the, the type of use as a, a storage facility, as well as the bright colors that Public Storage has as its branding, would detract from those folks traveling into Glendale either on the 134 freeway, or perhaps crossing over from the Los Angeles side of San Fernando Road. And I, I thought a little bit more about what the site presented itself as. The use as a public storage facility, I know, will create probably the most minimum traffic impact possible, much, much less than a big box, and you saw the, the uses up there, much less than a general retail, much less than, God forbid, what if we decided to put another apartment building up there, folks? And this council has been very, very gung ho in providing that sort of housing. I think that the, the use of the property as a public storage is really the most lightest use that could be anticipated. It's not going to create significant trips on the roadway. It's not going to create significant parking issues in the neighborhood. Not many folks sit there and hang out at the public storage. You pull in, you unload your stuff or load it, and you get out of town. The use of the storage is going to be limited, I understand, between specific hours of the day. Early morning till about 9:00 o'clock, I understand, it closes, the gate locks, even if you've got your access code, you cannot enter it. We will not hear complaints from the users of the train horns and the train vibration that naturally accompanies the corridor that we have right there. My complaints were then basically stemming down to aesthetic. I didn't like the idea of a orange-clad building right at the corner. Though my favorite pro football team does wear orange, and my college football team wore orange. I have asked the owners to dress the building in the away jerseys, if you will. Anyone who knows football understands that the home team wears their most colorful jersey. If you're traveling, you're away. Those colors, although evident, are muted and demure. And I, I understand, after speaking with the owners, that they would be willing to reduce the, basically, to dress it in the away jerseys, to maintain the, the colors where the public storage sign is indicated, but the rest of the, the color is, is not a do or die issue for them, and that they would be amenable to either filling in those with the, the neutral color, I believe the surface was a metal, or, or the glass, as they see fit. The corner is a gateway corner, as I said, and I understand that the owners would be willing to dedicate a portion of that front corner to a monument sign of the city's choosing, Welcome to Glendale. So, those folks either coming down, coming from the north on San Fernando, coming across Doran, or even coming across the freeway, will have a nice monument sign, which will be landscaped with flowers and niceties and a welcome to Glendale opportunity for us, because that is actually right upon the entrance to Glendale. So, with the understanding that they would be willing to do, make such changes to the building, lightening up on the orange, and making that corner a very well and colorfully landscaped area with flowers, with trees, along with a space for a monument sign, I, and looking at what else could be put in there. I mean, do we want a Carl's Jr.? No. Do we want housing? I don't. I won't speak for the rest of the council. But I think that the public storage building at that location is something that I can live with, with those changes. So, I would, I would hope those who were against this last meeting to take some of those thoughts into consideration and adopt them, and eventually support this project.
Cincinnati Bengals?
Bengals also. Except there's stripes on them.
That's, that's true. And then there's that collegiate team on the east coast?
Syracuse.
Syracuse?
Syracuse, the orange man.
Which one are you talking about?
Oh, I'm talking about the Cleveland Browns, as well as the Occidental, the Fighting Occidental Tigers.
Oh, I've never seen that play.
They've beaten USC a few times, if you look back at the...
How many decades back?
Well, we're talking about the 20th century games. They didn't have helmets back then, but they still defeated the Trojans. That's a split loyalty for me, but I won't go...
You live with that memory.
I won't go down that road.
Okay, Mr. Friedman.
I'll be very brief. I agree with everything Mr. Najarian said, which isn't always the case, but I think it might be this afternoon, with many things. But I think, as much as it would, you know, I thought, because it's a gateway, that it would've been wonderful to have a Disney building, to have whatever, I've been told that Disney's looked at the site, a lot of companies have looked at the site, and because of the noise, because of the shape, because of the traffic, which is a very heavily traffic-impacted corner, that everybody's passed on the site, and I think I, absolutely, this public storage building is going to generate the least traffic than anything I can think of besides remaining an empty lot, which it's not going to remain, and it's a nice-looking building. And I didn't know about the corner being dedicated to something other than an orange sign that says Public Storage, and that's a very nice offer, and I'm sure we can come up with something that they're proud of and that the city's proud of as well, so I'll support the project.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
Okay, I continue to be in opposition. I don't think this is a suitable use for this site. We've had other proposals. I remember two in specific, and basically, we chased them away with all the nitpicking, all the requirements, but we had two different proposals that, in my opinion, would've worked much better than a storage facility. What I find interesting is, we spent thousands of dollars and countless staff time to develop a creative corridor. We're trying to go in a different direction on this corridor, and in the very corner that you can see from the 134 and the 5 and so forth, we're going to have a public storage facility. Why did we waste our time? I mean, what has the staff been doing, all of the work that they've been doing throughout the years, to try to put together a creative corridor in the largest parcel, the most visible parcel? Ah, let's give them a bunch of variances, and bam, we have a storage facility. There are very few jobs that are going to be created, by the way. I don't know how many, but I've rented storage facilities in the past, there's one or two caretakers, a secretary, whatever, very few jobs considering the amount of, of square footage. So, I just don't see anything positive about it. I'm very happy that Public Storage got together with the adjoining neighbor and worked something out with them, but I think it's a horrible use.
I made my last... Oh. I... I tend to agree with the sentiments of Councilman Quintero. If there had, have been in the past entities that are very suited for this location that have been simply driven away, chased away by our own actions, I think we should, we should strive and should seek to look for other entities possibly coming to this location. And again, I mean, the, the question that Councilman Quintero asked, perhaps in a rhetorical or theoretic way, I want to ask in actual, you know, in actual terms. What have we done to make sure that we have more than one entity looking at that specific location? Are we actively marketing that spot to whoever's interested?
Was... I mean, it's not our property to auction, or to sell.
I know, but I mean...
The owners tried to market it for a long time.
But the city's going to end up with, with whatever ends up being there, so...
Yes?
Yes.
The position that I think we find ourselves in, with all due respect to our corporate tenants at Public Storage, is that while it isn't necessarily an exciting use, it does meet the zoning, and because we've been knocked out of the redevelopment business by the state of California over these last two years, we don't have the resources to go and assemble that site. And so, to the extent that we, through the streamlining of our entitlement review process, through our very aggressive reborn economic development program that is part of this current fiscal year, albeit without funding, but we do go out and try to broker different types of, of transactions, we just haven't had the means to go out and tackle something as large as this site. And we can't back it up with really any kind of funding, because that funding's been taken away from us. So, to the extent that the private market kind of seeks its own level, and to the extent that the funding or the zoning has been set, we kind of find ourselves in a situation where our hands are tied.
If I may, in terms of the creative corridor...
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
May I?
In terms of the creative corridor, you know, the city has done quite a lot over a number of years in adjusting the zoning, in marketing the area. You see the results of it in the Sealy's building, and what's happened there, and many creative uses that moved in. I've heard from many businesses that, I've heard businesses move in who say that they wouldn't have known about Glendale if it wasn't for our economic development staff, or at the time redevelopment staff, reaching out to them. I've heard businesses saying that they moved in because we were able to give them concierge service through those incentives that we set up, through the flexible zoning that we have. When we did our survey, we found out that we have a huge cluster of creative uses already in the corridor, and we've been able to build, using that knowledge to build on that and attract new tenants. So, we've been very active, and I don't know what's happened with this particular site, but I know that when I, when businesses that I've known have shown an interest in coming to Glendale and have met with economic development, they've been shown available sites that match their needs in terms of their space, their requirements, whether they're leasing, they're buying. So, I'd be very surprised if staff never mentioned this site to anybody. I would think that they probably have. I've been told that Disney looked at it, that other companies looked at it, and because of the traffic difficulties in the intersection, and also because of the noise of the highway, that it's, and the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, that it's been problematic. Would it be great if it was something real, if it was, if Google was moving in and they're going to have their sign there? Absolutely. Can we wait for that? I suppose we could. We could deny them the variance that they're asking for. We could use the variance as an excuse to deny the project, but the project is allowed by zoning. The variance is reasonable, given that they don't need the parking that the code would require. I've used Public Storage. I don't think I've ever seen more than one other person there at a time when I would go to a public, to the public store, when I had my stuff in storage when I was moving. It's not like you'd get 20, you know, 20 cars at a public storage unit usually, unless maybe Storage Wars is shooting or something. And I think they know their business. I don't think that they're going to underpark it. But the idea that we set up the creative corridor and nothing's happened, you know, I just don't want the public to get that idea, because I've seen quite a renaissance in that whole corridor over the last four, five years.
Mr. Quintero?
No, I didn't say nothing happened in the creative corridor. What I'm saying is, this is the largest parcel in the creative corridor, and I haven't seen that we've done anything about it. And basically, we're now creating a dead zone right there at the entrance and exit way to a major freeway. Because you're absolutely right, there's going to be next to no impact there. People come, store their stuff, visit it sometimes, other times they don't. But just to get the ball rolling, I think we should have at a bare minimum contacted the Honda dealer that's sitting here in Glendale Avenue, completely constricted in terms of... the Honda dealer that's sitting here in Glendale Avenue, completely constricted in terms of what they're doing, and maybe even approached them about this zone. I don't know. I'm not an economic development person, but I do know it's been sitting there for a long time. Public Storage showed up, you know, and that's it. It's a done deal. And I, like I say, I just think it's, it's going to be, you know, whatever. It's going to be okay, but we could have done a lot more for that corner and a lot more for the creative corridor, including a use that would lead to more employment. Because once again, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of people. Once the construction jobs are over, I think that pretty well wraps it up.
As for myself, I didn't think, and I still don't think, that is the best use of that site. However, I can find no logical reasons to deny it. I've read the reports on the variance, on the parking reduction, and there's just no logical grounds there to deny it based on those. We're not going to realize much tax out of that property in the future. Not many employees or jobs in that area. We are getting a quiet building there. I assume that the building itself will buffer some of the noise to the residential areas in the blocks east of, of this building, because sound goes up, it doesn't go through a building. So that, that's a little plus there. As far as the orange, I think that is your company color, the orange, if I'm right, at least the one that I've seen. But I will tell you, I've lived here all my life, and I had absolutely no idea that your U.S. headquarters was in Glendale. You've been one of the quietest corporate bodies in the city, and I certainly am looking for you becoming much more active in this community, giving back. There's many ways you can give back in this community. The taxes isn't going to cut it. I'm very interested in the studies that were done by the engineers and physicists. I found it fascinating and everything made sense. I agree with my colleagues over here about trying to do something on the corner, because it is the gateway, as Mr. Quintero, all of us have said, it's a gateway. So you're going to have to find a way to landscape it up and sign or whatever. Like I said, I can't find a reason to deny it. Don't like it coming down to me to make the decision yes or no. We say, no, you don't lose escrow. It sits there again for a long time, I don't know how many more years. I did have one question, though. We know it's a contaminated site, and it has been, and you're planning to take off two to five feet of material on the site and move it to an off-site storage location until it's tested to find out how bad it is. That was addressed, I think, in the IR. Do you have a site where that is going to be stored? Sure don't want it next to a neighborhood. If you could answer that one for me.
You know, we don't have a specific plan yet, but we're going to hire an environmental professional that'll give us direction that, how to proceed with that.
And I assume that two to five foot, it'll be the maximum depth that you will have to go in order to do your footings, whatever, on it. You're not going to go down with piles and contamin, into more contaminant.
It's a very limited area. If you, if the site with the furthest east adjacent to Mr. Kurt Singer's property, along that property line before it jogs back in, it's limited to that length and then ten feet out and two feet deep. So it's not a lot of soil.
Okay. I know it'd been addressed, but I hadn't seen the details. So rather reluctantly, I guess I'll go forward with the comments made by my colleagues here and my own contact. I'd like to see this company as opposed to some other companies in this town that call them, call this down their headquarters, and they do nothing in this community. Now, I believe in giving back, and I wish those other companies that will remain nameless would be more receptive to giving back to the community, and I hope you will set an example that I can hold up to the other companies to do the same thing.
And this is a great moment to remind them, Mr. Weaver, I would like to say that there's an opportunity to give back, and we can discuss that with them, and from the rose float.
I, I didn't have that in mind.
Well, there are many, many, to our homeless shelters, to our youth athletic programs, and we would like to embrace public storage, since we're putting you right at the corner, the marquee spot as you come in.
It's your, your headquarters is here, you know. Come on, everything I hear, you have to give to get in return. So we're giving you the site. You give back to the community, so be a good neighbor. So we're sure not going to.
Those comments in no way will reflect on my analysis and decision-making. My, my remarks were.
And we can be sure of that.
My remarks were, were set forth earlier in the meeting.
Well, it'll have to be seen in the future if indeed you do give back, as I and maybe some of my colleagues think is, is the correct, a correct way to give. The taxes isn't going to do it. It's too low, the sales tax.
Probably the district attorney will be interested in.
In giving the little back to us as well.
Yeah.
So with that, I guess I'm, I'm making the deciding vote on it, and I'll go with it, even though I don't think it's the best use of it. But I can, for me, I can think of nothing else after all these years. It just sits there and sits there.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move 1A, C, and D, and then later restate the modifications to the design approval, so we're clear on that. Get these out of the way and then come back with.
Is there a second? Is there a motion on 1A, C, and D?
Second.
A second, I mean. Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
No.
Van Noyen.
No.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye.
On 1B, I would suggest that we include the, in the design recommendation and approval, a reduction of the, I don't have a square footage, but a significant reduction in the use of the orange color.
If appropriate.
Apart from the highlighting, apart from highlighting the logo and name of, and trademark of Public Storage.
Now, you've met and talked with them?
I think they're okay with that. They're okay with that.
I didn't have the chance to meet. I was out of state.
And the second part is a portion of that.
Corner.
It'll be the northwest corner.
Duran and.
Northwest corner, corner of Duran and.
San Fernando.
San Fernando, to be reserved for a.
The appropriate.
And tasteful monument sign welcoming the city of Glendale, which will be landscaped with flowers around it as well.
Next motion, Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I have a que, well, somebody has a second motion.
Second.
Yeah, my question is, I mean, you're basically in Glendale as you drive down San Fernando Road, so I don't know how putting a monument there on that corner, coming right off the freeway, is that what you mean? Because then you're.
No, 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 no. Driving on the freeway.
Does it have to be that, that, does that have to be the text, or can it be something that we decide on later? Maybe it's about the creative corridor, maybe it's something.
Mr. Van Miden.
Members of the City Council, I just want to draw to your attention that it's off-site advertising, even if there's a, if there's a monument sign on private property, and so it may need to go through additional processing in order to approve having a monument sign on site that advertises "Welcome to the City of Glendale." I know the planning department can speak a little bit more specifically to that.
I really wanted to speak on that.
Exactly. So that would be the concern. It's not that, it's not something that could be done, but it would need to go through an additional level of approvals. It would be a variance from code, in fact, I believe, so Mrs..
That it'd be written into this motion?
That they would require, be required to go through all the appropriate city processes. We could, but it would need a separate review.
And look, I guess my question was, you come off the freeway heading east, there you are, you're now entering the city of Glendale, but on the corner of San Fernando Road, you've been in Glendale going north-south.
Yeah, but you're, you're on the 134 and you cross over the railroad tracks, and you're passing San Fernando Road, it's right there looking at you. It's to attract those that are on the freeway.
We're going to close that. I mean, we're planning on closing that door in.
Well.
No, 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 you wouldn't see that.
It's not so clear, no. The Doran Street crossing may actually be improved, and there may be significant traffic crossing there at that area.
Yeah, whatever.
Maybe we have to add the phrase in if possible.
It's correct. That was staff's recommendation is to actually add that condition of approval, not so much as a condition of approval, but as a consideration, that if it is permitted by code to have a monument sign that is essentially advertising a business, in this case, the city, on private property, which in this case is for public storage, we'll look into that. If it's permitted, great, we can go ahead and proceed. If not, there might be a possibility of actually having a dedication and having some sort of sign put in by the public works department, so on city property, to have a "Welcome to the City of Glendale" sign.
So that can be decided at a later date?
If so, the council chooses to proceed.
Don't hold anything up.
No, I don't want, yeah, we don't want to hold it up, but let's say to be upon, upon a proper approval and review by staff, Public Storage will make available an appropriate location for the placement of.
You write the right words. You got the drift.
We have the concept, and we can put that together. We understand. Thank you.
I hope you're satisfied with that out there. Look forward, I look forward to your giving campaign. Okay, there's our motion. Okay.
Did you say campaign?
The giving campaign.
Oh, giving campaign, oh. Okay.
Do you want to read it back, or reconstruct it later, or how do we do that, Mr. Garcia? Can we just?
I think I can capture most of it, and that is, the revised motion at B will include a reduction in the use of the orange color apart from the highlighting, highlighting the logo, logo, excuse me, and name of Public Storage, and also consideration at the northwest corner of the property of the, that an area be reserved for, as appropriate for a monument sign, subject to the review and approval of the city planning department.
Did you say muted orange?
Um, no, I believe I said a reduction in the use of orange color apart from highlighting the logo and name of Public Storage.
Would the word muted help?
We can add, we can add that if that's the.
But I don't know how much I can tone it down.
Muted means a change, now, we don't want to change their color, we just want to reduce.
It's a reduction, or it could be, the word was reduction.
You're talking about the intensity of the color.
Yeah, I think you said significant or noticeable reduction in the, the use of the orange color.
You can figure it out.
Other than the trademark name. Okay.
So that is the motion, everyone.
Is there a second on there?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Okay. Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
No.
Van Noyen.
No.
Mayor Weaver.
That concludes that item. Good luck, guys. Okay, now we'll go to two.
Item two is also a public hearing, Director of Community Services and Parks and of Library, Arts and Culture regarding Development Impact Fees Ordinance Amendment and Fee Resolution. Two A is an ordinance for introduction, two B is a resolution amending the amount and timing of the collection of development impact fees.
Mr. Cho.
Yes, Mr. Cho. Last month, you received and filed a report on an update on the development impact fees. The direction was given to staff to move forward with an upward adjustment of those fees to the maximum level that was contained in the 2007 study, and indeed to update the cost of construction index on top of that ratcheting up of the maximum number. So we have for you a brief presentation in this public hearing to consider those increases upwards and also show you by comparison where we are in the market. Teresa Alexanian will give you the staff report.
Good afternoon, Mayor Weaver, members of the council. We, per council direction from, from last month, we worked with Kaiser Martin and Associates to conduct an engineering news record review of the fee since 2007 to see what the construction cost index has been since 2007. And before you hear is, and it was included also as part of the report, and I believe you have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you, the current fees versus the proposed fees. Currently, the, the development impact fees for residential developments is $7,000, and based on the, the study conducted from 2007, shows that there's a 19.85% increase in, there should be a 19.85% increase in the fees from, from the date of the study in 2007. So the new proposed fees for residential developments for single family would be $21,828, and for multifamily, it would be $18,751 per unit. It goes down for commercial office industrial, we currently have for commercial $6.04, the proposed fee would be $6.50. For office, it's $3.21 per square foot, and the proposed fee would be $7.92. The industrial fee currently is $3.01 per square foot, and the proposed fee would be $3.24. And for Quimby fees, which are specific to subevents, subdivisions, currently for both single and multifamily, or, I'm sorry, the propose, the current fee is $7,000 per unit, and, or single family, the proposed fee would be $17,795 a unit, and for multifamily, it would be $17,006 per unit. For pipeline projects, which council defined last month to be projects that have, that are deemed complete for stage one approval, an application that's deemed complete for a stage one review, for design review, and the pipeline project fees would be, would stay consistent at what the rates are today. So it would be $7,000 for non-residential, and $267 per square foot, $326 per square foot, and $1.33 per square foot for commercial office industrial respectively. And the Quimby would again stay at $7,000 per unit. Last month, we looked at how our current fees compared to Pasadena and Burbank, and the fees were shared with you, and were higher than Burbank, but a lot lower than Pasadena currently. We were able to contact two more cities, Anaheim and Santa Monica, just to, to see how, what their fees are, and for Anaheim, for Anaheim, you see the, the fees, they go from $6,700, $6,936 per unit for a single family detached, to $5,388 for a single family attached, and then they also have multifamily fees, which vary from $6,998 to $5,408, and then they also have fees for mobile home and, and a specific area, what they call a platinum triangle project area, they have a specific fee for that specific project area. They don't have non-residential fees. And Santa Monica, they're currently doing a study. They just finished their NEXUS study, and they're doing a feasibility study to revise their fees, but they currently don't have mitigation fees. They have what they call a unit dwelling tax, and I was told by the staff there that this, this tax was implemented in 1973, and it didn't go out to the voters, but it's $200 per unit, and it's for residential. And if it was to go back out as a tax, it would have to go on a ballot for, for vote, for a vote by the community. But the non-residential fees that they have, what they refer to as an office development, it's specific to office development, and it's $5.06 per square foot for, between one and 15,000 square foot developments, and $11.24 per square foot for anything above 15,000 square foot.
Excuse me, that $200 a unit tax, is that a one-time tax when it's developed, or is it an ongoing?
Yes. Yes, it's, it's a one-time. My understanding is it's a one-time. But like I said, they are reevaluating their fees, they, they're, they completed their NEXUS study, and they're just doing a feasibility study, because they have other mitigation fees, like transportation mitigation. like transportation mitigation fees. And they're looking at what the impact would be to the community or to the development community if they were to implement the fees that they were able to find in their NEXA study. Just for comparison, as to, just a scenario, if we were looking at a multifamily development with a two-bedroom multifamily development, this is how Glendale would rate with the proposed fee. So Pasadena would be at 19,500 almost, and we would be second in line in comparison to the other cities that I mentioned earlier. There are, we did include a list of the pipeline projects. These are projects that currently, as of today, we know have submitted for stage one review or they have what we refer to as a deemed complete application for stage one review. So there's a list of projects that would be considered to be pipeline projects and would be grandfathered in at the current rate, which is the $7,000 per unit. And I guess that kind of concludes the presentation. So if you have any specific questions, the fees that we are proposing, and I'll go back to the first slide, is what's presented to you on the first slide.
Going back, how do we compare our surrounding cities, Burbank and Pasadena? Are we middle?
For Burbank, currently, if we're looking at a multifamily, Burbank's at $1,777 per unit. And Pasadena's at $19,477 per unit.
Let's go to the next slide.
If we just, if we put on the cost of living, or the CPI index only, would that put us, where would that put us in relation to the others? Is this what the proposed, well, this is the proposed fee, the whole thing, right?
That's what was the direction that was given yesterday.
That if a single-family has 212% increase, multifamily 168% increase.
Over what the levels are today.
And on the surface, it seems excessive. Anything we're doing that, you know, going into that percentage increase seems like a lot. But if it puts us in the neighborhood of our surrounding cities, I don't know much to say. So it'll be up to my colleagues what they want to do. But one thing that, been through this before, one other time where we started doing something this and we said, okay, if you're in the pipeline, certain time, you're okay if you're not. And then we had to start weaseling on that pipeline timeframe for the route. Like in here, you have to have application done, approved within 60 days. Now, there may be other projects coming that haven't got to that stage. Sixty days is pretty narrow. It's almost like we ought to have some way to increase the length. What could be done about that, Mr. Cho?
Well, I mean, to the extent that it's within the council's purview in terms of setting policy, you can raise the ceiling of what you consider to be grandfathered in. You can elongate the time in which you would apply these fees. There's really a great breadth of what the council's options are, up to and including the recommendation as crafted around council direction previously.
Well, in here, what's written 60 days, when an application has been deemed complete.
Yes, sir.
Is there a timeframe? Is there something, like they file an application or something?
The deemed complete, I'm sure our Director of Community Development can speak to that more completely than I, but there are a number of items that go into that application before we would deem it complete. It isn't as easy as filling out an application and submitting it. It has to have some, some degree of standing by way of the work that goes into an actual project.
I'm just concerned about those out there, when they hear this, because just look at the multitude of people in here wondering or talking on this subject. I have no cards. Nobody knows about this. And based on past years I've sat here, we will hear about it in the time to come, especially the pipeline stuff. And then we'll be back here discussing, how can we ameliorate this contention that 60 days is too short for a complete project? Is there any other way to handle it?
We actually have had a lot of discussion with the city attorney's office and among staff about this. As Mr. City Manager mentioned, deemed complete is a term that we use, consistent with the California Permit Streamlining Act. It has a very specific meaning. It really is the time that a planning staff writes a letter to the applicant and acknowledges that all of the application materials have been accepted and they're complete. It's a very, it's a very well-defined threshold. We do think that if you want it, you could expand the ceiling. However, we don't know if that would change, prevent people from coming in the last minute again and asking to expand the ceiling. Our recommendation is, whatever decision you make, we will, we'll take your direction. But by expanding the ceiling, you are not necessarily preventing Johnny Come-Latelys come here in the last second and say, well, would you give us another chance?
Well, I know a couple that are in the works, that they don't qualify yet.
Correct, but two months is, which is 60 days from today if you do adopt this, that's a pretty significant period of time, which tells us that within the next 30 days, they will have to really have submitted everything. Because staff, per California Permit Streamlining Act, has 30 days to respond to them. So really, it's a 30-day threshold for them to submit applications.
I've expressed my concern because I've been through this pipeline stuff in the past. Mr. Darian?
We were fortunate to have a well-written article in the Glendale News Press by internationally acclaimed reporter Brittany, Brittany Levine, over a month ago. So typically, this type of thing from the adoption, the proposal and reading it in is usually just a week or two. In this case, there has been almost five, if I'm not mistaken, about five weeks since that article came out. And I haven't heard any objection from anyone. My second point is, with regard to the increase that you noticed, the percentage increase, well, that was our fault because we artificially kept those rates low to encourage development. I think that that, that measure of success, if you call it success, or that standard, has been met many times over. We have just a boom in downtown Glendale. But I don't think we should extend it any further and I think we should, I mean, it's really almost too late, if you ask me. I can only use a calculator to find out what the additional, let's say, if there were 3,000 units that were built in the last, or entitled in the last year and a half, at the full rate of 18,000, we were about 11,000 short. So 3,000 times 11,000 is three, almost three and a half million? Is my math correct on that? So that, those are funds that could be used for our libraries, for our kids, and so forth. I don't want to get on that, that thing. But I think we should go forward. There is a 30-day window if folks want to get on it and submit it. I'm sure the news press will carry another story, reminding the development community. And I, I am sure that in the long run, that this council will be applauded for taking the action that we hope will take, that I hope we will take today.
Friedman?
Yeah, I fully support this. And I support the timeline as proposed. We had talked about doing this quite a while ago. And I was in support of it. I think the whole council was in support of raising fees. And then in 2009, everything kind of crashed. And we didn't want to be one of those cities, which you've seen out there, where everything just stopped and downtown's dried up and businesses moved out and that are still struggling. And so we capped the fees and we held them. We knew we were going to do this at some point, but we said, let's hold this until we get through this recession, hold them where they are. And we did. And now we have a downtown that has a Bloomingdale's and a Nordstrom's and has building and really is the envy of the region in terms of its economic vitality. But we have a lot of development now. I don't think we have too much, but I think we have, you know, we have quite a bit going on. And if this somehow stops some development, that's fine with me. I think it's not so bad for us to see where we are with what's under construction and what's entitled. That's not the worst tragedy in the world. And I actually think what will happen is that we'll just get better developers that have deeper pockets. That will come in. But again, if it slows things down now, well, you know, we're in a good place right now, I think, in terms of what's being built. So I'm not worried about that, if, you know, we have a good amount happening, we're very active. I don't think we desperately need more. So, you know, that doesn't concern me. It doesn't concern me if things get caught up in the pipeline. I agree that we've been talking about this. Any developer worth their salt, I'm sure, watches the meetings in regards to what happens in terms, you know, with development, reads the news press. So I think if they're blindsided, it's, you know, it's only their own fault. But this is badly needed money for the impacted area, for our parks, for our libraries. So that revenue is important. And I'm not at all concerned at this point with the impact on development because I think we're in a good place with the development that we have right at this very moment.
I'd just like to correct, correct one of my mistakes.
Mistake?
A mistake, and I think it's a very critical mistake. I earlier said that had we collected the full impact fee on those 3,000 units, that we would have an additional 3 million, 3.3 million in revenue. I was off by a factor of 10. We would have had an additional $33 million for our libraries and our parks. And that was, just to correct that.
Or we may not have had any development.
Exactly. If it had stopped development, you'd have zero. So I think it's not really a fair comparison. We don't know what we would have had either way. We could have had the exact same amount with, you know, less development, you know, who knows?
I have a question on the commercial office industrial. How did we go about establishing the proposed fees? What criteria did we use or what?
Mr. Quintero, members of the city council, the criteria established in the NEXA study that we adopted back in 2007, so those criteria have not changed. And it was based on that study that a fee amount was determined on a square-footage basis for those uses. And then also pursuant to that NEXA study in our ordinance, we are to review the fee amount on an annualized basis. Since we didn't impose that whole fee amount from the beginning, there was not, it was not really necessary to review that on an annualized basis. Therefore, we forensically went back and applied the engineering record to what would have been the increases since 2007. And we didn't know the jump would be 19, you know, percent and more. But that's what it ended up being and so forth. To be the full NEXA fee for today, that is what's reflected in this report. That's the NEXA study fee, based on the criteria in that NEXA study, plus that engineering news record and the construction cost index adjustment is what you're seeing.
And then, I'm just looking at the comparison between, well, Pasadena doesn't have any fees that I can see for impact fees for commercial or office or industrial. Burbank has some, and Glendale is definitely going to be the highest in terms of industrial per square foot, office per square foot, commercial per square foot. We're going to have the highest impact fees that, and as long as we're, money, Public Storage just walked outside these, their deal, there was 174,000 square feet that, how much did we lose on that? Does anyone have a calculator? We just approved it, just a minute ago, it was approved, 174,000 square feet on the old fee. So they got a hell of a deal. It's an internationally publicly traded corporation that's going to provide next to no taxes for us there in the corridor. But what a deal they got. So going with this fee comparison, we've got Pasadena at 19,000, Glendale at 18,000, and Burbank will be at 1,700. That's the way it will stack up after we approve this. 19,000, 18,000, and 1,700 for Burbank. And then the People's Republic of Santa Monica, they're at an all-time low. They've been getting a bad name among the conservative Republicans all these years, but they're not charging anything for multifamily development. It's interesting. I do generally support it. I think we've had quite a bit of development and it's proper development, in my opinion, to keep it in the downtown, not in the neighborhoods that are totally and completely saturated. And we did, as we know, downzone those neighborhoods and decided to do our development in a smart way in the downtown area. So I think we've gotten a good first round. And although it's a tremendous difference in the fee, I think the next wave will pay the freight. Or maybe not. We'll see where, we'll see where it goes. But on the 30 days, I think 30 days is awfully quick. Let me ask the director, are there any projects that you're somewhat familiar with that are interested in building and for?
I can tell you that since this item was first brought to council until now, there are only two projects that people have talked about, initial concepts for projects, which are not exactly in downtown, but near downtown. And we have informed them that this is coming up.
All right, so then the 30 days, you feel more comfortable with. I also predict that this will definitely impact a smaller development, a smaller developer way more than it will the larger REITs and the large companies that have generally been building in the downtown area.
Mr. Serrano?
I also generally support the increase in fees. I am a little troubled by the fact that it seems as if we're racing to the very top on all the impact fees, at least close to the top. And also regret that this wasn't done a couple of years ago. I mean, maybe not, not up to this level, but to some degree, the fees could have been increased a couple of years ago, just at a point where there was enough construction coming in so that we weren't scaring them off. But at the time, we could have benefited from all the additional construction that came in the door. But in any case, hopefully, whatever construction has come in the door will make Glendale more attractive for other types of development happening. And these impact fees will have a positive impact on the quality of life in Glendale.
My staff, I didn't want anybody to think that I don't support this. Just I was trying to express concerns that might be worth discussion up here, which we've had. And knowing, again, we can set the fee structure, whatever, and we can also revise it whenever we want, upward or downward, depending on what we see happen in Glendale in the future years. Part of it will depend on the economy, what's going to transpire. So whatever the majority want, I'm okay with it for now.
Mr. Mayor, I would, with your permission, I would like to introduce the ordinance at 2A.
You don't have my permission.
You need a second for that?
I have an objection.
No, not an objection. I'm sorry, I didn't want to disturb the discussion of the city council. Mr. Mayor, as mentioned by Mr. Hagani, we, staff has been discussing the definition of pipeline project and a number of components of this ordinance. And there were a couple of changes I just wanted to read into the record, having to do with clarifying that definition because it's very important.
Okay.
And it will be both in the ordinance and in the resolution. So let me read that modification in the ordinance, which is at section two, the definitions. Actually, it's 4.10030 definitions, this definition of pipeline project. I'm just going to read the entire definition. Pipeline, pipeline development project means any development project for which the Department of Community Development or its predecessor has issued a written determination that a stage one design review or equivalent design review application has been deemed complete or where a project has received a stage one or final design review approval or a building permit. Pipeline status is not indefinite and shall expire if not acted upon within the timeframes established in this title and in Title 30. So that's just to capture the fact, as we are aware, that the design review approval is good for a period of time, usually two years, can be administratively extended for an additional year. So if a project dies, it may need to come back.
With that clarification, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully your permission.
Yeah, I'll grant it. Yeah, I'll grant it.
I will, I will introduce the ordinance at 2A.
And how about 2B?
And I will move the resolution at 2B.
Actually, sorry, we, we'd recommend that we bring the resolution back next week with the ordinance to be adopted concurrently, so we'll bring that item back next week.
Oh, 2B?
Correct.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn at 434.